Welcome to the Maslin City Council Meeting for Monday, October the 20th, 2025. We have with us tonight the following city officials.
Mayor Jamie Slutes. Safety Service Director Renee Baker. Assistant Law Director Edmund Mack. Director of Development Ted Hearn-Kane. Police Chief Jason St. Noi. Income Tax Budget Director Lori Katagidis-Boron. Is there anyone present from administration I missed? That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under number five on tonight's agenda is where the public can speak on a topic that appears on the agenda. And then under number seventeen is where the public can speak on an item that does not appear on the agenda as well. I'd like to remind everybody at this time, including council, to please turn down the cell phones to vibrate, or please turn them off. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brian Huth.
Here.
President.
Cunningham.
Present.
Greg.
Harwick Smith.
Present.
Lewis.
Markham.
Here.
Packley.
Here.
And Ray.
Here.
Roll call of seven present.
Councilman Markham.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Lewis and Mr. Greg unless you were asking for the motion to amend the agenda first.
We'll get there. All right. Second by Councilwoman Creamer. Roll call, please.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
And Brian Huth.
Yes.
Seven yes to excuse Councilwoman Greg and Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight's invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be hosted by Councilman Ray.
Thank you, President Slater. Please stand with me for the reciting of the Lord's Prayer and the reading of the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Ray. I'm number four, reading of the Journal. Madam Clerk, are the minutes of the previous meeting transcribed and open for public viewing?
Yes, they are.
Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time?
No, there are not.
If not, then the minutes stand approved as written. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
I'm number five, remarks of delegations and citizens to matters on tonight's agenda. This is the part of the agenda where the public may speak on a topic that appears on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on something that does appear on tonight's agenda, please come forward, state your name, the ward you live in, the topic you wish to discuss, and please limit your comments to four minutes or less. Anybody at this time? Seeing none, we move forward. I'm number six, new and miscellaneous business. Councilman Markham.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a bill payable to Gannett for publication of our July ordinances.
Second by Councilwoman Creamer. Roll call, please, to amend.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
And Creamer.
Yes.
Seven yes to amend the agenda to include a bill payable to Gannett Local IQ.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
The agenda has been amended. I'm number seven, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number ninety-four dash two zero two five.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1433 Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Fund for the Reservoir Park Stream Bank Restoration Project for the year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Markham.
I believe I'm the only person from Finance Committee here tonight, so I would move this forward for first reading.
Ordinance number ninety-four dash two zero two five has received its first reading. Ordinance number ninety-five dash two zero two five.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1201 Street Construction M&amp;R Fund for the purpose of income tax refunds for the year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
First reading.
Councilman Markham.
First reading as well.
Ordinance number ninety-five dash two zero two five has also received its first reading. Ordinance number ninety-six dash two zero two five.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1208 Parking Fund for the year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Markham.
First reading.
Ordinance number ninety-six dash two zero two five has received its first reading. I'm number eight, unfinished business. Number nine, petitions and general communications. I'm number ten, bills, accounts, and claims.
Yes, we have a bill in the amount of $488.88 payable to Local IQ Ohio Gannett for the publication of our July ordinances.
Councilman Markham. Move to pay the bills. Second by Councilman Ray. Roll call, please.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
Creamer.
Yes.
And Cunningham.
Yes.
Seven yes to pay the bills.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The clerk will pay the bills and charge them to the proper accounts. I'm number eleven, reports from city officials. I'm number twelve, reports of committees. Our next work session will be Monday, October the 27th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. I'm number thirteen, resolutions and requests of council members. Councilwoman Cunningham.
Well, with President approaching Michael Gregg out this evening, I would like to give a shout out to the Tigers, to B. McKinley. Thank you.
Most definitely welcome on that one. I'm number fourteen, call of the calendar. I'm number fifteen, third reading ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number eighty-one dash two zero two five.
An ordinance amending Exhibit B, excuse me, description of public infrastructure improvements, excuse me, of ordinance number 183 dash 2016, the First North Tax Increment Financing TIF Agreement.
Councilman Markham.
Seeing that this is the third reading, if there's no further discussion on this ordinance, I'd move it forward for a vote.
Second by Councilwoman Harwick Smith. Roll call, please, for passage.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
And Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number eighty-one dash two zero two five has passed. Ordinance number eighty-two dash two zero two five.
An ordinance amending Exhibit B, description of public infrastructure improvements of ordinance number 184 dash 2016, the Stark-Glass Tax Increment Financing TIF Agreement.
Councilman Markham.
And same here, it's the third reading, I'll move this forward for a vote if there's no further conversation on this.
Councilwoman Harwick Smith for the second. Roll call, please, for passage.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
And Markham.
Yes.
Seven yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number eighty-two dash two zero two five has passed. Resolution number nine dash two zero two five.
A resolution establishing new publication procedures for the items covered by Ohio Revised Code, Section 731.21A, that such publication can be accomplished through a posting on the website and social media account of the municipal corporation specifically to the ordinances passed by Maslin City Council effective January 1st, 2026.
Councilman Markham.
This is the third reading on this one, I'll move that we adopt this resolution if there's a second and no further discussion. Okay.
So, do we decide if, I mean, I think this is all good, I'm all for this, I think it could save a lot of money because people just aren't seeing it, but I do think it should just go on the main city Facebook page or whatever media account, the main city one, I don't think we should have a separate one. Have, is that need to be decided now, or basically we're deciding now that we can just?
But, the website and social media account of the municipal corporation is the language that the Revised Code section allows us to use. My interpretation of that would be the city of Maslin website and the city of Maslin social media account. I don't think we would be following the Revised Code's procedures.
So, the MaslinOhio dot, and...
Otherwise, yes.
Okay, that was my only question. It would just be a matter of Diane coordinating.
Good evening, thank you, Council President. I just want to clarify, just so we're all on the same page, who's going to be posting these on the page? Are we going to have a separate page for city council, or how are we going to do this? I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page here.
My thought process was that we would post it on city council, just like our codified ordinances, that's where you would go to find our codifieds.
Okay.
So, I would be contacting LaBella, and they would walk me through the process to set up each month when the ordinance had been passed.
And then my office would share that information on our Facebook page?
Correct.
Okay, great, I just needed some clarification. Thank you, thank you, Council.
Councilwoman Brian Huth, you have a question?
I do have a question, but I think there was some more questions from the gallery.
Thank you. What?
Diane's talking about the website, not Facebook.
Correct. That's what I asked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, very website.
I misspoke, I apologize.
Yeah.
On a website.
Like I said, there would be a section that you could click on too, just like you do our codifieds.
Okay.
And it would just like it appears in the paper.
Thank you.
Right, and then they could just go on for social media and copy and paste that link, I believe would be sufficient for social media.
Right.
Okay. On City Hall?
The link to whatever the update is we put online.
Okay.
Very good, it's good.
I think Safety Service Director Baker has something to add.
All right, please come forward.
So, I guess the question is just, does it have to be posted on social media, and if it does, then who is doing that on the city account? Because we're responsible for the city account, and again, not that we don't want to help, but if it doesn't happen, then who does that fall on? Because if it's city council's responsibility to post, and you can only do that on our page, then we either need to work out, like giving you access to do on our page, or, do you see what I mean, and if that's what we do, that's fine, I just think that needs to be made clear, so whose, the responsibility falls back on one person, is all.
Okay. Now, is Sarah the administrator of your Facebook page?
We actually have several of us in the office that have the ability to do it, so we could add you as an administrator, if the mayor is okay with that, then that way you're responsible for posting your own things, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Please.
Thank you.
That sounds good to me. Thank you, thank you.
That was painful. Wait, I still have my question.
Councilwoman Creamer.
I'm still trying to get clarification based on what I just heard, post our own things. This is city council, and these are like our ordinances, our agendas, so I'm trying to get a clarification, this, these are citywide, these are those we're working on, so...
And I can...
This is where I'm a little, this doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
You can clarify that.
So, the burden is on the city to properly notice these things. The burden's not on council, the burden's not on the mayor, the burden is on the city. If we screw something up and we get sued, the city gets sued, not us. As city council, we are asking the city to properly post notice through this method, which is much cheaper than using the paper.
So, whatever that method is...
Whatever it is, yeah.
So, if there is multiple administrators for this social media page, that's going to be placed on that individual's task list.
Correct.
To post these. I just wanted to be clear, it's not going to, is it going to be Diane?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. But not us, okay.
Like I said, that was my thought process, because we already have a link for our agendas, our codifieds, this is all I have to do is create another link and insert the ordinances that were passed for that month into that link, just like you go and get your agenda for October the 20th. It's a simple process, very simple process. And they can be scanned in a PDF, so they cannot be changed. So, if you do it in Word, somebody could go in there and reword it, or do whatever they want it to, but if I do it in a PDF, it's there, and can't nobody change it but me.
Makes sense.
So, I mean, I have no problem with the extra responsibility, because it is going to save us quite a bit of money.
Just so that's added to your responsibility list, Diane.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Did I get a second?
And we can add a few dollars to the salary, too.
Did I get a second? Councilwoman Harwick Smith? Roll call for passage, please.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
And Packley.
Yes.
Nine yes for, I'm sorry, seven yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Resolution number nine dash two zero two five has passed. I'm number sixteen, second reading ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number eighty-five dash two zero two five.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Maslin, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Stark County Regional Planning Commission, SCRPC, for the Maslin Housing Department, ending December 31st, 2026.
Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is requesting this annual agreement adopted by the city of Maslin for professional services provided by the Stark County Regional Planning Commission. It is a one-year agreement, starting January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2026. The contract amount is $15,000, and that cost has remained the same from previous years. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to waive the rules requiring three readings and bring forward ordinance number eight-five dash twenty, twenty-five forward for a vote.
Second by Councilman Ray. Roll call, please, for suspension.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
And Ray.
Yes.
Seven yes for suspension.
And for passage, please.
Creamer.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Packley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
And Brian Huth.
Yes.
Seven yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number eighty-five dash two zero two five has passed. Ordinance number eighty-six dash two zero two five.
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Maslin, Ohio by rezoning a certain property from B dash two, Central Business District, to B dash one, Local Business District.
Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This rezoning request has been recommended for approval by the City Planning Commission at the September 10th meeting. We have scheduled a public hearing November 17th here at, in council chambers at 6:00 PM. Does anyone have any additional questions? Seeing none, second, second reading.
Thank you, Councilwoman Creamer.
Mr. President.
Should be, go ahead.
Do we need to reschedule to put it on the calendar, since we're not having the public hearing until 11:13? Because its third reading will be 11:03.
What was the 17th?
It is November 17th, so I'll be tabling it.
Yeah, 17th.
Until the public hearing, and then put it up for a vote that evening.
And it is for the Sheetz Gas Station. I failed to state that.
Okay, ordinance number eighty-six dash two zero two five has received its second Ordinance number eighty-seven dash two zero two five.
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Maslin, Ohio by rezoning a certain property from B dash one, Local Business District, to RM dash one, Multiple Family Residential District.
Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This rezoning request is at 21 South Avenue, Southeast. The applicant is Joe Logan, Connect USA Incorporated. The proposed use is to convert the former commercial property to a two-dwelling rental unit. Once again, there is, we've scheduled a public hearing on November 17th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Are there any questions from council tonight regarding this? Seeing none, second reading.
Thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. Ordinance number eighty-seven dash two zero two five has received its second reading. Ordinance number eighty-eight dash two zero two five.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the city of Maslin, Ohio to transfer parcel number 10003714, a .98 acre vacant commercial property currently owned by the city of Maslin, to the Community Improvement Corporation of Maslin, the CIC, for the purpose of economic development.
Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had multiple discussions regarding this request. The said property, CIC will sell the said property for a dollar for the purpose of constructing an indoor sensory park for children with special needs. Mr. Gully, I believe, is here this evening, speaking with, Mr. Hearn-Kane stated that Mr. Gully watched our work session last week, and he would like to, and heard a lot of the concerns, and he would like to address council regarding those concerns. So, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, Mr. Gully? And Mr. Young, Dallas Young, also.
How are you? Just wanted to address a couple of things that we, Ben, go into a little, a couple more things about it. First of all, the park itself, we're looking at the construction, so, to be honest, we are looking to do this because we want this to be a destination place. That being said, being a destination place in Maslin for that, we believe will bring additional business, kind of like a halo effect, so to speak. As people come in, they serve a park, they'll go to your gas station, they'll go to restaurants, they'll, while they're here, they'll do some shopping and things along that line. So, we believe, more than likely, almost wholeheartedly, really, that it will bring economic development around the area, and through the rest of the city. There was a couple other things, looking at construction and cost. I will be frankly honest, we have more than enough funds to take care of that. I know there was discussions about what happens if the movie theater decides, and then you would have an economic boom of another place. Honestly, before we even looked at this, Ben contacted them, because with some of the cinemas going out, we were looking at that property as, you know, something that we could buy ourselves already, so, if it does go out, you know, that's a, honestly, a win for us, because we're looking at that property in the first place. As far as other things, I heard things along the line of, maybe we can build a community pool, or something like that. If a community pool is something that's interesting, I think the cost for that, in comparison to what we're taking on ourselves, would benefit the city, as the city not doing that, and for us to incur all that economic development and cost, have no issues. You got a thing?
Yeah, I just want to do, kind of address any concerns that you guys had about me with the financial part of it. You know, I don't like to brag, I'm not a fancy person, you know, but when it comes to the funds to do this, I have absolutely no problem doing it. I approached Maslin trying to just buy the land. Same with the movie theater. I saw an ad that Regal was shutting down some of their movie theaters, you know, of course, I was trying to figure out the list, because if I could purchase the movie theater, that would have been perfect, would have saved me a lot of time. But, you know, I own the building, kind of catty corner, I don't owe anything on it, I put roughly probably $200,000 into it already. Let's see, I own three houses in Jackson Township, I don't owe, don't owe anybody on those. I just built a seven-figure lake house out on Lake Milton last year that just got completed. I'm not Shears, I'm not ARE. I don't like being in the public eye, I'm not that guy, but when it comes to the funds, this project is really not that expensive to me. I just don't want to feel like I'm acting cocky or anything like that, because that's just not the type of person that I am. Plus, I got good backers, too, and I don't like name dropping, but, you know, like Steve Kuhn is a good friend of mine, our kids go to the same ABA school, he's got professional grant writers that are more than willing to write all the grants for me. I know that was another concern that keeps getting brought up, that I haven't went for grants. You know, me personally, I'm not going to go for them until it's built. Like, I am very firm on that, it's just, I don't think that's the right thing to do. Until I have something physically built, I'm not going to ask for a handout. Sure?
Will you allow that?
I just want, like, hang on, I just want to say this, because...
Yes, sir.
I have a personal friend who knows you personally.
Okay.
And he told me point-blank that you would be a bonus addition to the city of Maslin with what your character is, financially speaking, he said, Mike, he goes, it's not about the money.
Yeah.
Okay, he has the money, he doesn't need help from anybody, but he said, Maslin would be not making the right decision by letting you walk away.
Yeah.
That's what he told me, just a very close friend of mine, so I just want to put my two cents on that.
That's awesome, I appreciate it, you know.
Councilwoman Huth?
I also do own another building right there on 77 in the Portage exit. I purchased the American Rifle Range, it's 22,000 square foot, clear span, directly across 77 from Chuck E. Cheese and the Strip. I could open it there, and I can open it there very fast, but Jackson Township is really commercialized, you know. Thing I like so much about Maslin, you got a lot of local restaurants, small businesses, if I can get them on board, like, say I build a sensory pod around one of the booths, so now all these local businesses, you know, they can advertise that we're a sensory-friendly You know, talking to like trampoline parks, stuff like that, I try to get their numbers. They say, on a Saturday, they would get 1,000 to 1,500 jumpers a day, you know, just on a Saturday. I know this is nonprofit, and I'm not charging people, but, you know, people say it might cause a ripple effect, you know, for all the local businesses. I think it'll be a friggin tidal wave. Like, if I can get some of these boards, or some of these businesses on board to offer, you know, special accommodations, their businesses are going to thrive.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming back and for listening to our conversations and hearing our questions.
I did put together a business plan for this. I did, I did, all right, I am, yeah, I am not a, I am not a paper shark, you know, I dread paperwork, but, you know, I figured this is such an important project, you know, we went ahead and worked together.
And thank you.
Holly, can you turn your mic on, please?
I can. Thank you for being responsive.
Where I sit with it is, the need is there. Your tidal wave will come, I don't doubt that. But if the city is coming in as a beginning catalyst for this with the transfer to the C I C, with the money, we want it to succeed. And, and we, not knowing you, and we
I get it, yeah.
Need to know that you're going to follow through, that this is a lasting concept, that you're, you know, that you have more than, than an idea.
Yeah.
And we're getting there.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's exactly why I came in, you know, because nobody knows me. It's kind of nice that somebody reached out to him about me or asked about me, you know. But like I said, I like staying in the shadows. You know, I've done a lot of stuff for Maslin over the years. When Kathy, when Kathy was mayor, actually, you got two semis full of toys and we set up shop, donated them, you know, anybody that needed them in the city of Maslin came down to my warehouse and got them. Went to the women's shelter, we got lists from all the family in there. And once I got those lists, I realized, oh, wow, there's a lot of people in here that are a little bit older than like ten years old. So I sent my whole crew out, you know, my credit cards, we got everything on every family's list in there.
The other follow-up is that in my daytime life, working in and around these special populations, I, I'm really interested to know who you're going to pull in from more than a parent perspective to make sure that your place is the best it can be for these populations.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to anybody helping. I mean, the outreach, well, just like the repository. I mean, that should, I don't know if you guys looked at that article, but if you saw how many likes were on it, how many shares were on it, but if you actually take a really good look at it and you scroll, repository ain't had a response like that in a really long time, and the only time that they get a response is usually on something negative. So the fact that this just took off and it's something positive, it's huge. I think I'm even underestimating it.
I got a follow-up to yours. So when you're talking about the concern in the long term, this is not something we're looking at as a short term, this is not something that we're looking at as going to be a fail. My grandson, his son, we live this every day. So it's not like something that we don't experience, that we don't know. Everybody's going to be a little different, but I just wanted to make sure that every day for the rest of our lives, we're living this. So it's not going to fail. I'm not worried about that. So I just want to make sure. And then as far as any kind of help, being that we're in that community, we're around a lot of people with that, we have resources and things along that line to make sure that everybody's safe and trained correctly and stuff.
I've had a lot of people reach out to me, you know, offering to volunteer. I don't think it's going to be a hard time. You know, there's, you know, I actually asked some of the people on there because I, I know, I know how my son is, I don't know how every disabled child is. So I've been picking a lot of people's brain on certain things, you know, one of the main things was exercise. How can we get these kids to basically quit being a bottomless pit? Because all they want to do is eat, and, you know, what happens if they turn out to be as big as me and moms like this tall? So we're trying to
Could you speak closer into the microphone, please?
We're, we're trying to figure out a way, you know, to make them more active, you know, something that keep them busy, but a lot of times it's hard to keep their attention.
Counselor McCutcheon.
Thank you, Mr. President. When you came forward, I was so excited to hear your plan. A, the fact that you're on twenty-one, which means families from the south, from the north, are going to be able to easy access. I have a son who is a school psychologist for Plain Local, not clinical psychologist, but he works with the I E. P. students.
Okay.
And when I shared this with him, that this was coming to town, he was excited.
Oh, yeah.
And he, he knows, you know, those kind of
I've had people reach out
Those students.
Columbus, everywhere.
The fact that I've been in business for fifty years and the effect of what you're bringing to town, and again, the effect of, the umbrella effect of people using our restaurants, using our stores. I am really excited about it, and I'm not sure where some of this negativity came from because from the get-go, I thought, what a wonderful idea, and the fact that you want to come to Maslin, not Jackson, not Perry? I was really excited about that.
I, I think I got the best chance to really make an impact in Maslin.
And you'll find out that Maslin is a wonderful community.
Yeah, I, I love it, all the small restaurants, stuff like that. I can't do that in Jackson Township. Everything is commercial, you know, it's all franchises and a couple of Mexican restaurants.
I just want to tell you, I personally, thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, President.
You're welcome. Counselor Markham. Ray, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, President Slater. You guys are like right there in my backyard. I, I see your store, right? I drive past you all the time, the properties. I think, you know, I'm definitely a hundred percent on board with, with the project in general. I think what, the only two pieces that, due to the fact that, you know, without the lack of planning, of understanding what the plan is, I think multiply, collectively, Council just didn't want to see it fail.
Correct.
So that it wasn't any kind of stigma, it was just, we didn't want to see it fail because we all stand by it. Like, you almost had me in here with a little something in my eye last time you were here.
Oh, yeah.
But with that being said, it's, I think people from the medical field want to know, make sure that you guys are coming from a good place medically as well. So, you know, you have a certain amount of people per child or however that works, but I'm pretty sure that you're adamant enough to take care of that.
Exactly.
I appreciate it.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Counselor Markham.
I mean, I think everybody here sees the potential benefit of this. I think the concerns from listening to last week's meeting are primarily focused around the free or one-dollar transfer of, in acres' worth of land from the city to you guys. And no offense to you guys, I think it would be the same feeling for most folks, if not anybody. I'm wondering if maybe, if Council were to amend this ordinance down the line before we pass it, to either say, A, we'll put a restrictive covenant that this has to be owned by a five-oh-one-C-three or other nonprofit corporation moving forward or reverts back to the city, or B, maybe we securitize an interest in the property moving forward where we would get paid if it's sold in the future, like, I don't know, ten years from now, twenty years from now, I don't know. These parks are hot right now and every community wants one, and we should for sure want one. But perhaps we could securitize an interest in the property where we get at least the fair market value of today's undeveloped land value back if it's sold in the future with a securitized interest when we transfer it. I sent an email to the Law Department today, haven't heard back on that one, but those are just my two ideas, either a right of reversion with a restrictive covenant or a security interest. And I think that would cover all of our bases here. If we're concerned about transferring land to admittedly an unknown quantity, no offense, guys, for a park where a lot of times, a lot of communities are partners in the park, but we're not really partners in the park, we're just transferring it. So maybe this gives us that little extra security on our end going one of those two routes, where if it succeeds, who cares if we have this in the background? But if something, God forbid, happens down the line, we're at least covered, the taxpayers are protected. I don't know how you guys feel about that, I don't know how anybody else on Council feels about that. We could do a restrictive covenant pretty easily, I know that's legal. Whether or not we can secure an interest on the land transfer, I don't know. I think we should be able to do that, but I didn't really dig into that too deep. Restrictive covenant's a little easier, though.
You know, with this, I've already invested seventeen thousand in civil engineer. I know this property's been for sale for, I think, about four years now, four, four or five.
How much did they want for it?
What? I believe it was, what, a hundred thousand, ninety-nine thousand? Yeah, it wasn't too expensive, but it also comes with anywhere between, I think it was like forty to fifty thousand dollars were the repairs that I have to do to the land before I can even do anything. So, you know, if you want to put restrictions on it, I mean, honestly, I came to you guys to buy it. I didn't ask for it, you guys offered, or at least brought up the fact to offer it. You know, that's one of the reasons why I'm real adamant about Maslin, because I like the way that you do things. You know, if it comes with restrictions, give me a fair price, I'll cut you a check, however you want to do it.
Mr. Hearn Kane.
So I just wanted to add, and Ben did go into the cost. The, the mayor and I decided to offer Mr. Gully L B. G. Properties, which is a for-profit entity that would lease to his foundation. We decided to basically give him the property for a dollar for a couple of reasons, and the biggest was the cost of fixing two utility issues on the site. We felt that for this individual to invest forty, fifty thousand dollars, which are our engineer department estimates, that if he was going to invest that in the site to build the park, we would give him the, the land for a dollar. Certainly, if there would be a purchase price of a certain dollar amount, I don't think it would be fair to have any restrictions or clawback period, then that would be a transaction whereby he would buy it for a certain dollar amount. Honestly, I think that's just kind of grasping for money, more money. Those funds would go into the Economic Development Fund since it is for the sale, from the sale of property, so it would go in that restricted account. We felt that just giving him the property through the C I C with the caveat that if he did not start construction or something happened within a year, that it would revert, you know, back to the city. I don't think we can do that if it's a sale. I think if it's a sale, then it's his and he can do whatever he wants with it in the future. I don't think, and we can talk to the Law Department, but I don't think we have any interest in putting some type of ongoing interest in the property. We've never done anything like that before when we've used the C I C. I think we have to be fair to him, whether you know him or not. I think we have to be fair. We didn't do that with the Boys and Girls Club, we didn't do that with Maslin Energy and Technology Park, and I won't bore you and go back year by year who we've transferred property to, to the C I C. So I think it's, from our perspective, it would be a clear, if you approve it, a transfer to the C I C, sale to a dollar. If it stays at that, we're willing to look at a, something within a year where we would get it back if, you know, costs are way, way too high or he just doesn't, you know, something were to happen logistically, I just wanted to add that.
Counselor Harwick Smith.
Thank you, President Slater. I just want to say I was one of the people concerned about just giving an acre of land away because I have to look out for the interests of our citizens. From the very beginning, as a nurse, I thought, this is wonderful. I still think it's wonderful. Thank you for answering our questions and concerns. I'd like to thank Mr. Hearn Kane because after he spoke last week, he swayed me about the property and I was okay with it. So I know I was one of the people concerned about, but I will say I am in support of it.
I appreciate it.
So you got one, for sure. Thank you for your time and all you're doing.
All right, thanks, guys.
Counselor Mccremer.
Oh, wait, Mr. Gully.
Okay, let's go.
Mr. Back, do you got something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Yeah, my concern all the time was not for the intended use at all. No one, who can say no to that?
Exactly.
With a straight face, it was just the giving of the property. And if there is a way to make it look good to the general public, because those that I've spoken with in the community, well, why not offer it to Holly or to Ted, to Mr. Hearn Kane? But there's all those, and that's the only thing that people have concerns with, that I've spoken with in the community. But for the intended purpose, great, no one can say no to that. I know from the school district in the past, the special needs, numbers of kids is growing, growing.
Yes.
And there's a lot of them. So it's something that the schools would, I'm sure, always have an involvement with.
Oh, yeah, like the little field trips and stuff, there's a lot of schools that take their kids to parks like this, yeah.
And, but, anyway, thank you for everybody.
You're welcome.
Just want to leave you guys with one last thing before we go. This is something, just like I said earlier, something that we want to be here and we want to do. Economically, it's, it's actually less expensive and easier for us to get another property that's already done, that we can come in here. So I just want to let you know that. We're here because we want to be here, not because economically this is better for us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you both.
Counselor Mccremer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, I don't believe our questions were negative. I think we were doing our due diligence and asking what needed to be asked. So we have a good understanding, and as Mr. Gully stated, we were, multiple individuals were asking for business plans, you know, so we're getting those things, you know, in, in line because we all thought it was a great idea moving forward. So based on that, second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Mccremer. Ordnance number eighty-eight dash two zero two-five has received its second reading. I'm number seventeen, Remarks of Delegations and Citizens to Matters Not on the Agenda. Is there anyone present at this time who'd like to come forward and speak on a topic that did not appear on the agenda? If so, please come forward, state your name, the ward you live in, the topic you wish to discuss, and please limit your comments to four minutes or less.
My name is Barb Bergmeyer, and I live in Ward Two. And I've been seeing on the news and in the newspaper about the roundabout that is scheduled for Maslin, for Route twenty-one and Lake, and for First Street Northeast and Lake. And I'm really concerned about that. The way the paper and everything seems, it's almost a done deal. Now, they've said that there's going to be a meeting for the public, but they don't have a date. I was told maybe November, maybe December, but there's no date at this point. But there is an issue with the traffic in that area, and I have no problem with that because I live in that area. But the, I can't see something like that going on as far as being helpful for the city and for the traffic. I think part of the solution could be if they could sync the lights for twenty-one and First Street, that would be a big help because right now, the traffic light on twenty-one is a tripped light, and the one at First Street is a timed light. So therefore, they can cause a bottleneck there really, really bad. If they sync the lights, that would definitely help. Also, another thing would be is if traffic violators would be sighted. The people don't drive fifty mile an hour on twenty-one, they do a whole lot more. And then there's a lot of people that run the red lights, twenty-one, First Street, Lake, the whole nine yards. But also, there is a no-turn on right for northbound twenty-one. I was instrumental in getting that sign put up because I would be traveling eastbound on Lake Avenue, and with the people turning on Lake from northbound twenty-one on a red light, they would fill up that tiny space so people coming eastbound would get stuck on the highway. So when the traffic light for twenty-one would turn green, they can't go because they got all this traffic lined up there. So I talked with the previous Safety Service Director, she called in ODOT, they did a study, and that's how that sign got put up there. But it's not being enforced. I think with the city of Maslin, possibly the State Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Office monitoring that, citing people would help to save the, give the city and everything a little bit more so it's not so congested and everything. And so I would like to see something like that to help the city to sync the lights and to enforce the traffic laws. And so that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Antonio Guian, I live in Ward Three, and I just had a comment that I wanted to share with people that are in charge, that since the new school has been built on Harsh there, I've noticed that there has been stepped up enforcement of the speed through there, and I wanted to thank you for that because that has basically been a drag strip the entire time I've lived back off of Twenty-seventh Street, and people are slowing down. So, thank you, and also, Pete McKinley.
Please sign in. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Ray.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second by Counselor Markham. Roll call, please.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Harwick Smith.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Ackley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Brian Huth.
Yes.
And Cremer.
Yes.
Seven yes to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.